I'll call to order this Select Board meeting of July 21, 2025. And we do have an executive session first on the agenda, so I'll take a motion.
Okay, I'll make a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss strategy with respect to potential litigation regarding the Massachusetts Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities Safe Harbor decision for the Crosby Village LLC comprehensive permit application located at 39 North Road and 3 Crosby Lane to return.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, roll call. Thank you. Jeff?
Aye.
Aaron?
Yes.
Aye.
Aye.
And Pat. Okay, so we have five in favor. So with that, we are adjourned to executive session.
Testing, 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 testing. That's better. Okay, so we don't, we don't need to vote to open session or anything. We have to call the meeting back to order. Okay, so I'm calling back to order the open session portion of the July 21st, 21st, 2025 Select Board Meeting, if everyone would join me in the Pledge of Legions. And this meeting is being televised and recorded for later viewing by the public. So we're going to do public service announcements first, or do we want to just do the meetings first? Can we skip to the meeting minutes? Good God. Okay, so we're going to skip a little bit ahead because it's not quite six o'clock and we want to make sure that nobody misses anything of major substance. So we're going to go and skip right to the end and just approve some meeting minutes here. So we have agenda item number 13. We have a whole bunch of meeting minutes. I don't know if anyone has any comments off the top of their head. If they got a chance to look at them. I feel like we've been slowly getting these, so.
Are we going to do them all together or one at a time?
I think we can do them all together, if you don't, unless there's a lot of.
Well, I haven't, it looks like none of my edits made it to the 23rd, the meeting of the 23rd.
Okay, so do you want to do?
For that one until last meeting?
Yep. But the second and the 16th and the 30th?
They're all fine here.
They all look fine to you? Okay. Do you guys have any? Okay, so if we want to do a motion to approve the June 2nd, 23rd, and 30th ones, we can do those. Do you want to, do you want to approve them with the amendments or no, they need to be?
You don't know what the amendments are. Okay, and I just noticed none of mine are in there, so I don't want to.
You don't want, you don't know exactly what they are off the top of your head right now? Gotcha, okay. So I'll take a motion for those ones.
Okay, so I'll make a motion that the board approve Select Board Meeting Minutes from June 2nd, 25, June 16th, 2025, and June 30th to 2025.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. And then we'll defer the June 23rd minutes until we get an updated version. Thank you, Pat, for putting that out. Do you want to do appointments then?
Do the appointments, yeah.
Okay, to get us to six o'clock?
Yeah.
Sure. Okay, so then we're going to skip back to number 12 and do some appointments here.
The election workers is your first item.
So first we have the annual election worker appointments. We have a long list here. Hardworking election workers. Do we want to do these?
Presented.
Yeah, we should probably do these one by one, right?
I'll make a motion that we approve the 2025 to 2026 election workers as presented in our packet.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Approved, thank you. Next up, we have another Select Board Appointment for the Center Village Master Plan Implementation Committee for Nathan Andrew Montero.
Ready for a motion?
Sure.
I will make a motion that the board approves the application of Nathan Andrew Montero for the Center Village Master Plan Committee as presented.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Approved. And next up, we have another Select Board Appointment for Kathy Klitsky for the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee for an unexpired three-year term ending June 30th, 2026.
Okay, I will make a motion for the board to approve Kathleen Klitsky, her appointment to the DEIC Committee as presented.
Wait a second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and next up, we have some town manager appointments.
I'm seeking your confirmation to, for the reappointment of Ruth Luna to the Community Preservation Committee as a citizen appointment for a three-year term ending June 30th, 2028. Or do them individually or do them all at once? Up to you.
Okay. I don't see it. Am I missing it?
Because it's a reappointment.
It's a reappointment. It's a reappointment.
Okay, if nobody has any questions, or should we, we could do all of yours together.
Okay, sure. I'm also seeking to reappoint the Parade Committee as presented. That's Candace Chase, Sam Chase, Paige Gillette, Sean Hanaway, Jeff Hardy, Eric Lindstad, Charles Marcello, Lynn Marcello, Kirk Marshall, Karen Reedy, and Richard Romano for a term ending July 31st, 2016.
2026.
2026, 2026, I'm sorry. 2026.
Ten years behind there, huh?
And then, and then also, we have a new person interested, obviously very experienced with other committee activities. Taryn Angel, who is in the Health Department, has expressed interest in seeking to join the Parade Committee. And I would seek your confirmation on her appointment. She's been very helpful and successful. I think she'd be a great asset to this committee based on the work for the Fall Fest and other health activities. And then finally, to the Recycling Committee, Charles Terranova Jr. for a three-year unexpired term ending June 30th, 2026.
I'll make a motion that the board approve the Town Manager's appointments as presented.
Should I recuse myself under the?
No, no, you can point yourself. There's no conflict.
That's a good question, actually. All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Great, wonderful. All right, so minutes and appointments are all set.
And it's six o'clock.
And it's six o'clock, so I think we can go back to the beginning and do our public service announcements when you're ready.
Okay, public service announcements. The Chelmsford Health Department has a walking group. Join them for a walk along the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail. They meet every second and fourth Tuesday at 9:00 a.m. to 9:30 a.m. at the 110 Baseball Field parking lot, Chelmsford, Fletcher Street. All abilities are welcome. Please note that they will not meet during inclement weather, and if you have any questions, you can call 978-250-5241. Save a Life, sponsored by the Board of Health. Free Narcan training. Learn how to recognize an overdose, presented by the Chelmsford Health Department. What you'll learn, you'll learn what opioids are, how to administer Narcan, xyllophine and fentanyl facts. Who should attend? Teens, parents, and community members. This is being held July 30th from 3:00 to 3:30 at the Chelmsford Town Hall Fire Training Room. Any questions or comments, you can email tangel@chelmsfordmass.gov. We have a project update for Chelmsford Lowell Bridge Bundle Replacement. The Mass Department of Transportation will fully replace two bridges in the town of Chelmsford. These include Westwood Street over I-495 in Chelmsford and Route 3A Gorham Street over I-495 on the Chelmsford Lower Line. The contractor will begin early work in April 2025, including science temporary traffic signal installation and preparation of the Phase One Bridge Detours. Following the completion of the work, the contractor anticipates implementing the Phase One Bridge Detours as follows. Gorham Street Bridge Full Phase One Closure to be implemented Tuesday, June 24th, 2025. So that is fully closed at this point and will remain closed until the opening in some 18 months. The Westwood Street Bridge, the bridge closure is implemented 24 hours a day. There was an opening over the July 4th, but that has since now been fully closed and as of Monday, July 7th, and will be closed for the next 12 to 18 months. A local detour route is implemented at each bridge for all vehicles. Pedestrian access will be maintained across each bridge during these closures. Bicycle access will be maintained for Westwood Street during the closure and will follow the vehicular detour route for the Gorham Street Bridge. When Phase One is completed, the bridges will be open to all traffic. Town of Chelmsford Public Notice, Fall 2025 Annual Town Meeting. The Town of Chelmsford will convene the 2025 Fall Town Meeting on Monday, October 20th, 2025. Articles to be included on the warrant must be submitted to the Office of the Town Manager at 50 Bill Ricker Road prior to 4:00 p.m. on Monday, August 4th, 2025. Petitioned articles must carry the signatures of at least 10 voters. For more information, please contact the Town Manager's Office at 978-250-5202. NIMCOG News, Volunteers Needed for the Northern Middlesex Outdoor Asset Inventory. Are you a fan of the outdoors? Are you curious about the conditions of your favorite trails, bike paths, campsites, and more? Join NIMCOG as a volunteer to collect data for the Northern Middlesex Regional Outdoor Asset Inventory. When completed, the asset inventory will be available for residents and visitors to the region to find information on amenities, accessibility, and context for outdoor recreation sites. Gather data on your nature walks, camping trips, or trail runs to advocate for your favorite destinations in the Northern Middlesex Region. To volunteer, please complete this form. To volunteer, please complete this form, which you don't have, but. Um, questions about the project may be directed to Amy Bickford, NIMCOG Municipal Fellow, at abickford@nmco.org. And that is it for public announcements this evening.
Great, thank you. Um, next up, we have general public input. I don't know if we have anybody here for general public input?
Nobody in the Zoom either.
And nobody on Zoom? Okay. Um, next up, committee vacancies.
Okay, committee vacancies. As of July 21st, 2025, Agricultural Commission has one unexpired three-year term ending June 30th, 2026. Board of Assessors has one unexpired three-year term ending June 30th, 2027. Bicycle and pedestrian Advisory Committee has one three-year term ending June 30th, 2028. Capital Planning Committee has one three-year term ending June 30th, 2028. Um, Chelmsford Center for the Arts Town Hall Advisory Committee has a one three-year term ending, uh, June 30th, 2028. Uh, Commission on Disabilities has one unexpired three-year term ending June 30th, 2026, two unexpired three-year terms ending June 30th, 2027, and one three-year term ending June 30th, 2028. Council on Aging Board has one unexpired three-year term ending June 30th, 2026, and two three-year terms ending June 30th, 2028. Historic District Commission Alternate Member has one unexpired three-year term ending June 30th, 2027. Holiday Decorating Committee has two unexpired one-year terms ending December 31st, 2025. Parade Committee, all applicants are welcome, one-year terms ending July 31st, 2026. And the Permanent Building Committee has one three-year term ending June 30th, 2028. If you're interested in serving on a town board committee, please complete an online application, available on the town website. For more information, please contact the Town Manager's Office at 978-250-5202. Our TM Office at chelmsfordmass.gov.
Thanks, Pat. Um, next up, we have licenses. Okay, and it looks like our first license is for a transfer of the Common Victual License from Jala Enterprise DBA Egg Mania to Sri Chamunda LLC DBA Egg Mania at 83 Parkhurst Road, number 15.
Dev, on, Dev, you're on the Zoom? Do you wanna turn your microphone on and your camera?
Thank you.
Yes, hello?
Hello? Good evening.
Good evening.
Um, would you like to tell us what your, what your license is about? Give us the gist?
Yeah, so, um, we have, uh, we are purchasing the, um, Egg Mania Restaurant in Chelmsford, and, um, this is essentially a transfer from, um, the old owners to, um, us as the new buyers of the restaurant. Nothing is really, um, changing. Um, it's just the ownership change.
Okay.
Can I ask if you have any, um, restaurant experience?
Uh, yeah, so, uh, we have another restaurant in Luburn. It's called Tiranga Luburn. Um, it's a quick serve, fast, uh, or Indian food as well, um, Indian street food. Uh, this is, um, uh, what Egg Mania is, is a little bit more with, um, you know, chefs involved, and it has proven franchise, uh, recipes, and, you know, it makes it a little bit easier, um, to, uh, this restaurant will be even easier than operating Tiranga.
Okay, great, thank you.
Are you just transferring it as is? Employees and name and everything?
Yes.
Just an ownership change? It's easy.
And the, the alcohol license transfer will be at a later date? This is just for the common victual?
They have an alcohol license?
That's what Christina's telling me, yep. They'll be, they'll be, yep.
So will they operate without one for now?
Yes.
Yes, uh, we, we, we won't sell alcohol up until we get the, um, required licensure, um, from the state as well as this town.
Okay.
And no physical changes to the, um, to the site?
No.
Okay.
They sell alcohol now?
Yes, they do.
It's surprising, I did not know that. Okay. All right.
I don't remember that, but.
Does anybody have any other questions? Okay, I'll take a motion.
Uh, let's see. I'll make a motion that we approve the transfer of the Common Victual's license, um, from Jala Enterprise DBA Egg Mania to Sri Chamunda LLC DBA Egg Mania uh, to be exercised on the premises at 83 Parkhurst Road, number 15, as presented.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, the license transfer is approved. Thank you.
Thank you, have a good night.
Awesome, thank you.
Good luck.
Good luck.
And next up, we have a one-day beer and wine license for Anastasia Akary at 115 Middlesex Street.
You're also on the Zoom, and he's also here in the room too, so we have both.
Hi, I don't know.
Nope, not here?
Okay.
On Zoom?
Hi, you can turn your, yeah, there you go. Hi, how are you tonight?
I'm doing good. Thank you.
You're here for the one-day beer and wine license for the funeral at, uh, St. John's?
Yes.
Okay, so it's a funeral?
Yeah, it's a funeral.
Okay.
On July 26th?
Okay.
Yes, that's.
Oh, I see. I was reading the wrong thing. Got it.
This is at St. John's?
Six, yeah, six over, yep. Two certifications there, yep.
Okay.
Does anybody have any questions, comments? Nope?
All right. I'll make a motion that we approve the one-day beer and wine license for a funeral being held on July 26th at St. John the Evangelist Church at 115 Middlesex Street as presented.
I'll second that.
Can we have a motion and a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. License approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, next up, we have the Town Accountant and Town Manager FY '25 Performance Appraisals. So we have the consolidated reviews here. Thank you, Christina Bruce, for your help consolidating those. Um, do you need me to sign these, by the way?
Yes, yeah, when you're done, you know, once the board approves them, you can sign them.
Um, so, I, I, I don't exactly recall what the process is here. I feel like, did we read, did we just go through each, um?
Just the summary is fine.
Yeah, just the summary.
Just the summary.
I feel like last year, we had all the debate about whether or not we were reading everything or we just summarized it.
Yeah, it was just, yeah, basically, yeah. Hit the high points and, and maybe ask the, the respective persons in those positions if they have anything to say.
Okay. Um, so I guess. What's that?
Then give us a chance to comment.
Okay. So I guess, should we go through, should we go through the Town Accountant first? In case Darlene would like to go enjoy this beautiful, beautiful evening after, after your performance review? Okay. Okay. So. We have some goals here for Darlene. Um. Her first goal was training an HR Director and Benefits Coordinator on Munis. She said, "I would like to have Munis fully utilized for HR and benefits. This will simplify the HR and payroll process, integrating all employee data from hire to retire, and improves and eliminates data redundancy." And it looks like.
These are all actually those that were achieved.
Prior year comments, uh, prior year.
Goals. Yeah. Yeah. Um, and the comments. So you don't want me to read all the individual comments? So the comments, um, were, were generally supportive of that goal. Um, and I think that we're all kind of under the understanding that she's made a lot of progress in getting everybody up on Munis. Munis is up and running now and kind of, uh, thriving, so. So. Yep, and that it's a good initiative that will serve the town and its employees well. Um. Let's see, Darlene's second goal from last year was digitalizing scanning old payroll and tax documents. Payroll and tax documents are required to be retained for 30 years. She said, "I'm running out of storage space for these documents and having them digitalized and scanned and will reduce the amount of storage space and will be easier to retrieve." We had some comments, um, about how this should be an ongoing goal for, for all the town departments, um, and applauding the Accounting Department for, for being proactive in this. Yep, there's some comments about it being an ongoing process, but appreciating that it's, that it's getting done, so. No concerns there. Um, goal number three was continuing financial controls and reporting of all ARPA and grant funding. There's still a year and a half of expending and reporting that will need to be done on the ARPA grants. Darlene said, "I will continue to monitor the accounts and reports to the Select Board and the federal government on all expenditures." No one seemed to have any concerns. Um. I think we've all heard Darlene's ARPA, uh, reports and been thankful for her keeping us updated on where we are with those, those funds. Um. Okay. Let's see. Other key performance factors. Um. Comment upon strengths effectiveness in dealing with people, teamwork, creativity, problem solving, leadership, communication, initiative, and productivity. Outline areas requiring improvement, which will be addressed in the Training and Development Section. One member commented that things seem to be well under control and that they appreciated your proactive efforts to streamline processes and digitalize records. Um. Couple of members didn't have any comments. I think we're pretty, we're pretty content with your, your strengths and effectiveness in those areas. Um. There's comments that you are concise but comprehensive and informative, and that your department runs efficiently and effectively, and that your staff perform duties accurate and in a timely manner. Okay. Is this, am I saying enough or too much?
You're good.
Darlene's like, "You're fine, just."
Done, no, should've done more.
Um, okay, the next overall performance evaluation.
So this, this is where we usually.
Can you talk about the goals for an expert upcoming for you?
Okay.
And you can, you can talk about a little bit.
Yeah, I think that is the end of our, is it?
That's, that's the end of last, the, the previous year.
Yes, that's the end of last year's goals and objectives. Okay.
Pat was just making a comment, Erin?
Yeah, cause usually at this point, we do give her a vote on the overall performance evaluation.
Yeah.
And then, and then we'll go on to talk about, you know, the coming.
And let, and let Darlene kind of comment about what you have for next year? Okay, thank you. Um, okay, so yeah, so at this point, for last year's goals, um, and performance, we do have an overly, an overall performance evaluation here. Uh, we had mem, one member mark you consistently exceeds accepted, accepted level of performance, and the other four members of the board all marked you with the highest rating of exceptional performance. So, congratulations. That's pretty, that's pretty impressive. Okay. So yeah, if you wanna, if you wanna come up and talk about your other goals and objectives that are on here for next year.
So we usually do take a vote on that.
Oh, okay. Oh, because we do give her one overall?
Correct.
Right? Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
I mean, it looks pretty.
Pretty clear.
Yeah, pretty apparent, but.
Yeah. Okay.
No, I'll just say, I mean, I just wanna make a comment. Um, you know, I've been doing stuff for the town for 25 years, and I've had the, the good fortune to work with Darlene on everything from school projects back 20 years ago through fire stations and everything else, and all the different reporting and billing requirements and, and, um, uh, just all the different requirements with MSBA and all the different entities that we have to go through. She's been on top of everything. You know, we've talked about recently, you know, our architects and our OPM came in for the, um, Parker Middle School Project, and they were concerned about, you know, our town accountant, you know, knowing the MSBA rules and everything. I said, "You have nothing to worry about. We're in good shape. We've been doing this for a long time." So all I wanna say is that after years of working with, um, Darlene as the town accountant, um, the town is very lucky to have her, and, uh, she does an exceptional job.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Okay. Does anybody else wanna say anything?
Well, as Erin stated in his comments, you know, we've only been here for about three and a half months, and we really haven't had a lot of opportunities to work directly with Darlene, although I've known her personally for many, many years. You know, I have wonderful things to say about her.
Yeah, again, it's, um, you know, my, my experience, obviously, from the board is limited, like Jeff's, but obviously, I've been around town hall and involved in a couple of things over the last couple of years, the town meeting rep, and, and as somebody that's got, you know, 25 years in public and private finance, um, I seem like I learn something new every time Darlene presents something. So municipal finances is a, a, a unique, um, area to be in, and, um, I think the town's very fortunate to have Darlene's experience in that and, and, uh, keeping our books for us. So, you know, I just wanna make sure that she knows that, um, I appreciate the effort, and I look forward to working with you over the next couple of years.
Thank you. I do appreciate that. Okay, so I'll take a motion for, for Darlene's overall performance.
Okay. I, um, will, um, make a motion that the board accept the overall exceptional performance indicated in the review form. Um. Exceptional performance by the town accountant.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
I can just go, just touch over what I have, what my goals really might come out for this, this year. Um, again, a lot of the things in the, in the County Department can't really change because we're really under, you know, the Mass General laws really and, 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 um, the UMS. Every, you know, all of the towns have to, will buy, you know, their general ledgers and all of that. We live by a large, uh, rulebook. Uh, but things that we can try to do in the offices is one of the things, and we're seeing this around a lot of the towns, um, is security, and we're getting a lot of spam mail and, and, you know, fake emails saying, "Send money out here," and "Wire this," and, and they're getting even, these scammers are getting really good at what they, they do. Um, before we were getting, I would get an email saying, you know, it was Paul Cohen, um, but it wasn't, I would look at his email and it, you know, I knew it wasn't Paul because it was like from some Gmail account or something like that. Well, now they're even getting better, that they're actually using his, his email, and they're, they're, they're getting really, and we talk, I talk about this with our, um, our MIS department. So this is something we really, I've been focusing on in the, in the town, um, to make sure that we're safeguarded, that we're not gonna be wiring out a million dollars, as you've probably read in around, surrounding other towns, including Lowell, and that, that they got, they got packed, and they got caught in that. So it's not, and I'm not, I'm making sure that my department is aware of this. So we're really working strongly about, you know, when emails come in or we get a phone call and, or something that we, you know, we don't sending out, or wiring out millions of dollars of money, we're making sure, double checking and, and not doing anything, um, until we have some audits done of what we're gonna be doing. So that's really a, a strong suit right now in my office, and I think that should be, um, everywhere across a lot of the towns. I really need to buckle down on this. So it's really, we always think that our MIS department is handling this, but, you know, it's, if it comes into, you know, my accounts payable clerk, and she's just like, "Oh, okay," you know, and she's in the middle of doing a warrant, and she's like, "Oh, just, oh, you know, I know that vendor, they're really nice, but it's fake," and she sends that check out, you know? If, uh, if something gets missed, that's, you know, that's the, can be very costly to the towns. So we're really, um, that's one of my things. We've, wrote, wrote some financial policies around that also, uh, for that. Um, and in the, in the, um, the same thing with, uh, our financial software, we make sure that there's safeguards in our financial software that we, we have. Um, we, of course, use Munis, or it's Tyler Technologies now. Um, we're housed, they house it, they, we, they have it in the cloud. We don't have our servers here, so they back us up and they have everything, um, if something, if whatever happened. Here at the town, we would still be able to get payroll out the door and all things like that. They would be able to handle that for us, which is, it's, it's a nice safeguard. It also helps out with our MIS department that they don't have to buy additional servers and backing us up with, um, and things like that. So we're really being safeguarded with them. Um, so I'm always looking for the forefront of our financial software, not only for ease of use in my office and things to make things easier and better. office and things to make things easier and better to just manage my office, but also what are the software that they're using, that we're using, how are they keeping us safe also? Because they do have all of our data in the cloud out there. So we always make sure that we're working with them very closely with Tyler. So I work with them. And then I don't know when I'm going to be leaving, but I do see myself within the next, maybe, three to five years retiring.
Yeah, we've canceled our retirements going forward for now.
So I really want to develop like a three-year plan for my office, for eventual attrition in my office. At this point, I don't really see anybody that's in my office that would be coming into my position, but I don't know anybody else in the other offices that may be interested in becoming the town accountant. I know later in the agenda, you're talking about the hiring of a town accountant. But this is something that I feel I really need to do for the office to prepare, and I'm, because I don't ever want to just leave. I've just been here too long, love the town, live here. This is my town. And I wouldn't ever just, "Dip, I'm leaving. Goodbye." I want to make sure there's a plan. I want to make sure that you guys are all, you know, aware of what we need and what you might want to be looking for, for a town accountant. For a town our size, we're close to being, you know, we're, actually be a small city. I mean, the, our budget total, when I go to accounting associations and they say, "What's your budget total?" They're like, "Oh, my God, that's how much you manage?" And then you have ARPA, and you have all your grants and all your other stuff on top, you know, because it's not just your general fund. We have all these other funds. And I'm like, "Yeah, it's fine. I've been doing it for a long time." But, you know, some of the smaller towns, they're just like, you know, kind of sticker shock when you tell them how much money you're managing. So I really, this is something that I personally want to take on to develop a three-year plan for my office so that you people can hire somebody to take my place.
And I guess that's about all we have. And then we have the training and development plan.
Yeah, I'm always doing, I mean, I always, I actually have to go to the, my MMA, I have like, it's the MMAA Association, which is in March out at UMS Amherst, to keep my certification to be certified as a government accountant. I need to attend those every year. So I do that. And I don't really do a lot of the classes anymore, but I'll do a lot of the DOR, the DORs will come in and talk about what's coming up. The legislators will come in and talk about what's coming up for financial stuff for the towns and stuff like that. So I kind of keep up with that. Also do any type of workshop trainings if Munis has a local user group. Myself and somebody else in my office will, I'll take with them. So we kind of just keep up with, you know, there's a lot of webinars and things like that that we've been doing. So we just kind of keep up with what's happening out there in the government world for accountants.
Sounds good.
But one thing I do want to say is I really appreciate all your kind words that you said tonight, but I don't do this alone, and I cannot do it alone. And so I just have to really thank my team for all their hard work. I just do the backend stuff. They're the like day-to-day, every day. They get those bills paid. They pay the town. They really are the engine of my office. And without them, I just wouldn't be able to get the recognition. So really, the recognition is the testament to how great they are and what they do for me every day. And I appreciate their loyalty and their hard work every day. And when I do their reviews, I make sure that I tell them that, that it's, that my review really reflects on everything, you know? It's just, it's not just me. It's the whole office. So I really appreciate them.
Please let them know that we appreciate this service.
And always, I always thankful for, you know, the board's support and everything. So, thank you.
I do think, you know, just to comment on these goals, especially in some of the things that I've had to deal with in my own work world lately, I think Darlene hit like the three, if I had to come up with three goals that I had to set for myself in a finance or business role, this would be in line with that. So I look forward to whatever we can do as a board and as individuals to support these goals going through the year. And I know it does take a team, but it's a testament to the leadership there, too. So this fraud thing is-
It's big.
I mean, I got a text the other day from the alleged COO of the company. His number's on my phone. It wouldn't come from a random text, asking for confidential information. So it's everywhere, and you are safeguarding our funds. So again, I appreciate the forward-looking of the goals for next year. It's pretty spot on.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Okay, thanks, Darlene.
Thanks, Darlene.
Okay, next up, we have the town manager review. Okay, so, okay, so I have the town manager review from, oh, and the consolidated review. So do we do this the same way? Are they both in here? Are they both in here?
It's, Christina has prepared the consolidated comments of all the board members, and then the other thing she's included in there was-
Oh, I see. She put in your original, your self-assessment.
Yeah, my self-assessment, yeah.
Okay.
We'll have to go over that.
So I forget how, now how do we normally do this one? Do we talk about his self-assessment, or do we just go through the consolidated?
No.
Right? Okay. I know, I wasn't quite sure why that was, why that was really even in here for this meeting, but, okay. So again, big shout out to Christina for consolidating these for us. And I forget, Paul, have you seen these?
Yeah, I've seen them. Yeah, this has been another packet over the weekend, and it's a lengthy, I mean, it's a lengthy performance appraisal form. So I don't know if you want to go through everything. It just, we'll be here till, you know.
Maybe just, you know, briefly cover each category?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
You don't need to go to every detail, one on every category, just in general.
Okay, so I can do that.
Everything's favorable. I mean, all the marks have been favorable, so.
Yeah, some are, yeah, I can. Okay, so category one was relations with the select board. And let's see, there's a few here. The first one is in regard to keeping the board informed about matters critical to our policymaking role. The second one is providing information on an equal basis to the board members. The third is around anticipating and following up on board requests for information. Fourth is available to the board on official business. Fifth is considers available alternatives before making recommendations to the board. And the sixth was complying with all relevant duties and responsibilities as defined by the town charter and select board policies. So, you know, this is all fours and fives from the select board members. There really isn't, I mean, if there was anywhere where I would say it looks like number five, considering all available alternatives before making recommendations to the board, is the only area where you had a few fours as opposed to fives.
And the four is what, strong performance?
Yes, and four is strong performance. So ones are unacceptable, two is needs improvement, three is satisfactory, four is strong performance, and five is outstanding. So, you know, you have a strong, a bunch of fives in here, mostly fives, and, you know, a few fours. But again, yeah, that considering all available alternatives before making recommendations towards the board is really the only area that I see where you have more than one four. So if anything, that would be the only call-out I would make there. And as far as the comments go, you know, I think it's pretty, it's pretty clear here that everyone is pretty happy with your availability for us and your, your keeping us informed and your communication. I personally feel like I text you and call you on a regular basis with questions that sometimes I think are ridiculous, and I appreciate your patience and your availability all the time. So, yep. And then, does anybody have anything they want to add in regard to relations with the select board?
Good job.
Then I'll just go on to the second category, which is fiscal management. Fiscal management on all of these bullet points. Number one was develops and administers a process of budget preparation and review. Number two is controls operational and capital costs through adequate budgetary controls and judicious economical utilization of manpower, material, and equipment. Number three is around providing the board with timely and sufficient reports on the financial status of the town. And number five is alerting the board and the community of anticipated changes to the financial status of the town in both the short term and the long term. And you received fives across the board in regard to your fiscal management. I feel like it's a pretty, that's somewhere that you absolutely excel, and I feel like I hear that from people all over the place all the time. So, yeah. I really, I feel like that's an area where you excel over and over and over again, year after year. So obviously, we're in great, great shape. Both you and Darlene, I think, are huge contributors to that, so.
I think Paul's been doing this for years, though, because, you know, I sat in the audience for many cycles at town meeting, you know, and it's a lot of information to boil down. Paul puts together a good presentation that I think most people can get a good understanding of, and, you know, he speaks to those facts. And I think the reason why we're able to weather where we're at right now and why we consistently have a high bond rating is because of the efforts that Paul and his team, and Darlene certainly, but Paul puts in. So I think we're very fortunate to be, have this leadership over the last eighteen years, to be able to kind of weather the next couple of years that are coming. So Paul, I really do appreciate the work you've done there.
Anybody else on fiscal management?
Good job.
Wonderful. Okay, and category three was personnel management. We had a few bullets here. Effectuate sound personnel selection and placement policies. Recruits and retains competent personnel for town positions. The second bullet was leads by example, communicates organizational values, directions, and expectations. Emphasizes the importance of teamwork and leadership. Treats all personnel in a fair and equitable manner. The third was motivating personnel through leadership and training so that they are increasingly effective in the performance of their duties and achieving common goals and objectives. Making all employees stakeholders in the process of delivering services. Number four was promoting and supporting the public service role for all town employees, emphasizing exemplary performance and assuming responsibility for staff performance. And again, this was an area where you had a mix of fours and fives. Actually, number two, leading by example in community organizational values, directions, and expectations, and emphasizing the importance of teamwork and leadership. Treating personnel in a fair and equitable manner. You had fives across the board. So, and all the other areas was a mix of fours and fives. the comments were pretty positive, not too, nothing too crazy. One member did note that knowing that you, that reductions were coming, you were able to limit many of those reductions through attrition and carefully evaluating other positions to minimize impacts on townwide services. I do think that that's, from a personnel management perspective, that's a really great insight.
Thank you. It does make a difference.
Because that was a tough time. Yeah, that was a tough, that was a tough spot. So. Does anyone have anything to add?
I think you captured it well.
The next category, category four was managing the town. And we have, again, some bullets here. Just let me make sure I don't take too, too long, the rate I'm going through these. Okay, number one was executing the policies adopted by the board in a timely and appropriate fashion, including implementing short and long-range strategic planning direction, annual goals and expectations as defined jointly with the select board. Number two was around analyzing organizational problems or issues and identifying causes, reasons, implications, and solutions. Number three, capitalizing on the diverse ideas, cultures, and thinking of employees and the community, and accepting new ideas and suggestions for change. Number four was presenting and utilizing innovative solutions to conditions and situations affecting the town by creating an environment for empowerment, innovation, and organizational agility. And number five is develops or is in the process of developing a comprehensive understanding of the problems and issues existing in the town of Chelmsford, anticipating, planning, and prioritizing future needs and programs and recognizing potential issues confronting the town. And this was another area where you, again, are all fours and fives. One area in particular, executing the policies adopted by the board in a timely and appropriate fashion and implementing short and long-range strategic planning direction. You had all fives across the board. And the fifth bullet there, developing or in the process of developing a comprehensive understanding of the problems and issues existing in the town of Chelmsford and anticipating and planning and prioritizing future needs. That area, you also had fives across the board. And I do feel like those two areas you are particularly, you perform particularly well at. And the other areas were about half and half with fours and fives. So again, you know, performing well above average, if not exceptional. Does anyone have anything to add there? I don't have too many comments. Number, category five was relations with the public. And here, again, we're a mix of fours and fives. The first bullet was handling disputes or complaints involving residents in an effective, equitable, and timely manner. The second bullet was being available and visible to the residents on a regular basis. The third was presenting board policies and positions accurately, equitably, and effectively, directing public acknowledgement to the select board and its role as the governing body. The fourth was anticipating public concerns with current and future services, programs, operations, and preparing for the concerns in a proactive manner. And the fifth was utilizing print and electronic media to effectively inform the public of activities and initiatives, including keeping the town website accurate and informative. And again, this whole category, it was kind of a mix of fours and fives. Let's see. In the comments, several members commented about your presence at town events and And willingness to meet with residents and business owners and other stakeholders at any time. There was some comment about the newsletter, which it's obvious, you put a lot of effort into, in my opinion. Oh, and I commented actually about the email subscription recently added, which I thought was a, was a great kind of addition. Does anybody have any other comments?
Appreciate your high visibility.
Yeah, I think, but I think the thing that doesn't necessarily come out in these last couple things is that Paul's effort to manage the town, Paul's effort in being available to the public, you know, myself included before even being a board member, the door's always open. He always seems to be here. The light's on awful late. And again, I know he does it with a team of people, but I don't know if people understand or appreciate the amount of hours it takes to do that, and it's every event. I try to make every event, too, and I can't, but I know Paul's at every event. And I think most people, whether they agree or disagree or have a concern, they know they can go to Paul, and he'll stop what he's doing and answer the question, and then he's going to go back and do his day job. So again, that doesn't come out in these words, but I've seen it firsthand on a number of occasions where he's just available, and he'll stop what he's doing and take care of what needs to be taken care of from a resident perspective or a board member perspective. So again, I appreciate that.
Me, too. Although I didn't see you handing out pizza at the holiday period this year. I feel like last year, we're handing out pizza, and I was like, "That's a great place for you to be. That's perfect." Okay.
Yep. No, I'll just say, you know, it's the same here, and if I didn't see his wife commenting on certain Facebook things and such, I believe that he has no family because he's always here. So, but we know better. So, but thank you. You know, because, and I'll say it, I mean, just about every single event, Paul is there. So we appreciate that. Makes a difference.
Okay, the next category, category six was relations with other governments and agencies. And you had almost, almost all fives, almost all exceptional performance ratings in this area. The first bullet- The first bullet was deals effectively with other government agencies at all levels in representing the town. The second was utilizing the resources available at the Massachusetts Municipal Association, MCAG, LRTA, and other regional and state agencies. The third was cooperating with neighboring communities and maintaining open communications with other municipalities in areas that may affect or relate to the town. And the fourth was advising the board of relevant legislation and developments in the area of public policy affecting the town. And again, you had almost all fives in this category. There was one four in there. So, members commenting that you have a healthy working relationship with the appropriate government agencies and related agencies, comments about the regional weights and measures program with the town of Westford and Tewksbury, the energy advocate that will be hired. Those are some examples of your outreach to neighboring communities.
I think it, I think it's telling when, when we were at the event for, for George's going away and all three reps came up to me and just said, hey, you know, you're, you're pretty lucky to have a, have a town manager like Paul. We tell our other constituents, do what, do what Chelmsford does. So I think, I think Paul's experience with the, the state reps and agencies has paid dividends for us over the years. And I know will to, you know, will continue to do so. And if there's anything I have, I have a question about how it works at the state level, I know I can just call Paul, text him, email or something, and he'll be able to explain, again, in plain language, how that operates. And I think having that level of relationship and experience and knowledge of how things operate at the state level is a huge, huge benefit to our town. And that didn't come overnight, so he's done a good job at fostering those relationships and experience over the years. So I appreciate that, not just as a board member, but, you know, as a resident and taxpayer here. Those relationships really matter. So, thank you, Paul.
Anybody else? Okay. And the last category was category seven, personal attributes. Number one was communicates effectively, clearly, easily into the point. Number two is demonstrates sensitivity to the opinions and concerns of others. And number three was adapts to and deals effectively with unanticipated conditions and situations. And again, you have a pretty, you have a solid mix of fours and fives here. It's about half and half. One member saying that you are seldom flustered, you are frequently called to speak on at public events, often with little advance notice, that you have a straightforward communication style and present effectively and efficiently, and that you understand who the interested parties are in given situations and appear to be considerate of their concerns and relay to the boards appropriately for consideration. So again, it's all pretty positive feedback there. And then the overall, or the goals, accomplishments, they are, without reading them, straightforward. It's pretty, it's pretty general. Good job at managing the goals of the select board and the town manager's office, understanding the uncertain times we live in, maneuvering and positioning the town to take advantage of opportunities and safeguard against curveballs. Bringing forward the idea that would allow the suppression of utility lines on Chelmsford Street. Being creative there was a, was a, was a big pull. Collective bargaining agreements, getting those through this year. And tracking the subsidized housing inventory. Oh, and the volunteer recognition idea and having the annual volunteer fair in March was also noted as a, as a wonderful contribution. So that is the end of your performance review. Your overall rating, you were rated fives by all the members of the board. So I suppose we take a vote on that also, right? I don't think it's...
Not going to be a surprise.
It's not a tough vote, but, but if anybody, I don't know if anybody has anything else that they want to say to Paul before we just wrap it up and give him his vote. Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
For making our job easier.
Paul, again, thanks. I mean, you know, you're always, you're always there. You're always at every event. And as Aaron says, every time I pick up the phone to call or just driving by, I'm going to stop in and say hello to Paul just out of the blue. He's always accepting and such, so the town management is exceptional and it's a credit to you. So, good job.
And to Aaron's point, you know, being new to the board and we're just seeing things for the first time, anytime I'm not sure, I can call Paul and he'll give me a clear, concise explanation of why we have to do things the way we do them. And so that's been a huge benefit, and I thank you for that.
And I'll just comment, you know, I'm with several regional organizations and go to a lot of networking events, and folks from other communities are always envious of us having Paul here. So I think, you know, we want to keep him here as long as we can.
Yeah. Another one, not allowed to retire. Nobody's retiring.
Agreed. That's right. You can't either.
New policy.
Man, it's, we've, we've...
So we're going to do a vote on that?
Yes. So with that, I will, I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion that we have no more retire, uh, no. Sorry. I'll make a motion that the board accept the overall rating of, of five, which is outstanding for the town manager's performance for the previous fiscal year.
I'll second that.
Okay. We have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Approved. Congratulations.
So you want to give Paul a chance to respond?
Oh, that's a great idea. Yes. Would you, would you like to respond?
Yeah.
I can't remember. Is this, is it a little different every year or is it just... Is there anything you'd like to say, Paul, please?
First, I'd just thank you for your support, you know, over the past year and then, or years for a long time and such. And then obviously, you know, for the new members of the board, thank you. I do look forward to coming to work every day. I also want to thank the people I have the pleasure of working with every day in this building and across the town departments in terms of, you know, as Dolly noted, you know, you're, you're one person but supported by so many. And in my 19th year here, you know, I'm just amazed. And I, and Dolly noted in her comments, this isn't like this everywhere, folks, and meaning how well we work together, what we call upon people to do. You know, Dolly knows, and she, and she goes to the other events and other communities, and I encourage my department heads and others to go, go, go to the conferences, go to the workshops, go to the sessions, because you, you're going to hear about other towns and, and it gives them a good perspective. Because I don't, again, I've been doing this for 35 years and I've worked in other towns and I've worked here 19 and going. It's extraordinary what gets done in the town of Chelmsford in terms of the staffing that we have and the commitment that we have by the people in this town. And I'm, and I'm just thrilled to have the opportunity to work with them every day. As you know, we're at the levy limit, you know, meaning we can't raise any more property tax. But obviously, there's demands upon the town, and we're at staffing levels that are basically 20 years, essentially the same. Yet we know the population has grown, we know the demands in the, in the society has changed. And yet, we persevere and we, we excel and we move on. And that's just, again, due to those who, you know, who work professionally in the building, but it's also beyond that. It's those who volunteer for this town, serve on the boards, in most cases, and essentially all, without compensation, the volunteers, everybody who, who contributes to make this community so great. And obviously, we see one of the highlight events is the parade just, you know, a couple weeks ago. And as we said, and I know we're going to meet next month, I don't think we could have done anything to improve the parade. It was such, it just sort of is the, it's sort of like the beacon of what the town is. And it really is underneath. So again, I want to thank the board, I want to thank the people I work with, I want to thank the community and the public. You know, it's, these are trying times. And, you know, we, you know, we thought, we thought we had seen a lot of it in the pandemic and we perseverated through the pandemic. But now, it's just a period of uncertainty, right? Here we are, we've adopted a budget, the state's adopted a budget, and yet we're all sort of sitting on pins and needles because we don't know what's, what's going to come next in terms of the funding issues from the, with the economy, the funding from the federal and the state government. But yet, as you noted earlier, we're well poised to present it and will respond as we have to do. And I know in some cases, it's frustrating to, to department heads and to employees and others because they want to do more. They know that we are understaffed, but it's just like, well, look, folks, you know, like everything in life, you got to make difficult choices. And I think the other thing in closing that's hard is, you know, when, if you'd come in this room 15 or so years ago, you'd have more people in the room in terms of the public, you'd have a reporter from the Lowell Sun, you'd have a reporter from the Independent. Those days are gone. And, and it's, it's no fault, nothing stays the same, change is constant. But that's our biggest challenge is how do we reach people? And that's, and, and I think part of what I try to do is, is try to be a defender of people because I see what people go through and I see what the people volunteer and I see the entirety of what they do. But yet, in today's world, it's really challenging because they don't have the information, because it isn't put out to them. Not everybody can watch these meetings or watch all the board meetings and everything else, and it's just hard to get information out. And that, I think, is the challenge that we have going forward, as well as living in a society now that's black or white, no gray. And it's really challenging. And that's what I try to emphasize is, you know, look, we all live in the gray and try to accept, you know, what, what is and the idea of compromise and coordination and so forth. And so I just want to express that that's sort of what, what keeps me going is, is the work is challenging, but these are, you know, these are challenging times, but in a way, it's, it's an exciting time because it is challenging. And I think that, you know, we'll, we're well equipped and I, again, thank you for everything and appreciate your kind words. I'm not perfect. I graded myself fours and fives, too, because there is no perfect, any, any position, any person, any organization, anything. But all we, but what we do is we strive every day to do the best that we can, and we'll continue to do so. So thank you very much.
Thanks. Madam Chair, if I may.
Thank you.
I just want to echo something that you said, Paul. And so my business works in many different municipalities in the state. And I just want to say that, you know, being in and out of all those different municipalities over the years, I get to see how a lot of these different towns operate and so on. And, and there's many people in town that will, will hear what I'm saying and say, how many times has he said that before? But I say that all the time. When I get back to Chelmsford, I could not be more proud of the way the entire staff works from top to bottom. And it comes from the top. So you and all of the department heads do an exceptional job. And Chelmsford is just extremely lucky to have everybody. And I fear, actually fear the future a little bit because I know there's big turnover coming. And I hope, I hope that the town is fortunate enough to, for the next round to be as, as good as this, this team that's here today. So, just want to say that.
All right. I guess that's it for that. So thank you, guys. Thank you for bearing with us. So next on our agenda, we have the approval of the project funding agreement with the MSBA.
Yeah. This would be real concise on this one. As you know, we went to town meeting, at the special town meeting, we got the funding for the South Row Elementary School partial roof replacement accelerated repair project. We now have received the state's contract documents, much like we did earlier a few months ago for the Parker Middle School project. So what, what I need the board to do this evening is to approve the project funding agreement. And as you can see, it's lengthy and it's all the standard MSBA process agreement. You know, it includes the budget, which obviously was provided to us and we voted that at town meeting. We will get the town council's certification, which is required. And so what, essentially what we need this evening is the motion that's in front of you, which is basically to approve the project and funding agreement and to basically authorize me to act as the town officer, you know, on this agreement. Obviously, this project is well underway for the South Row School. We now have the funding in place. We have the state assigned OPM and the state assigned architectural design of services. And again, we'll continue our efforts to get this project completed next summer.
Okay.
Ready for a motion?
Does anybody have anything? No? I'll take a motion.
Okay. I'll move the select board authorize the town of Chelmsford to enter into and be bound by the project funding agreement between the town of Chelmsford and Massachusetts School Building Authority for the South Row Elementary School Accelerated Repair Partial Roof Replacement Project as presented, that the town manager be authorized to execute the project funding agreement on behalf of the town, and that the town manager be authorized to make final binding decisions with respect to the proposed project described in the agreement.
Paul, second that.
Okay. We have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. Next up, we have the select board policy for the town accountant hiring process that Pat drafted for us.
Yeah. Since this was one of our, our goals for this year, to finalize the, the three professionals that we are responsible for hiring, the town, town council, town manager and town accountant. This one is probably is, most closely follows a typical hiring process. When I met with Darlene to talk about her performance review, we did also talk a little bit about what that process might be. I have also spoken with the HR director about what it, how it should flow. There was one suggestion that was made by Paul. In fact, the, let's see, it looks like this, the sixth paragraph about the interviewing team. I had noted it should be the two select board members, the HR director and either the town manager or town finance director. He thought it should be both town manager and town finance director. I was, as I was thinking about that, one of the reasons why I said one or the other was because I've been in situations on both sides of the table where you have half a dozen people on one side and one. So I'd like to keep that, you know, kind of to a minimum. So maybe we could have just one select board member, the HR director, town manager and finance director. And then if available, the incumbent town accountant could also sit in. And that would give you five people across the board.
I think that's reasonable.
Yep.
I'd rather see the select board go down to one to, to make sure that we have the town manager and the, the town finance guy.
Yeah. Right. And, and keep in mind, we're not going to use this for at least five years, right? So...
Well, we've canceled all resignations and resigning, so until further notice, so, can I say?
Yeah, I think that's fine.
Yeah. So I'll, I'll just change it.
So one select board member...
That person would be designated by the, the chair, either the chair or the designate in the way I would, I would word it.
Yep.
So I don't know if anybody else has any other concerns or issues or...
So one select board member, the HR director, the town manager and the town finance director and the incumbent town accountant.
Right. If, yeah, if, if they're available and if, if they're willing to. I mean, you know, sometimes, depending on, on how things work out, maybe you don't want them in there.
Yeah. Yes, yeah. Or maybe they're already gone.
That's right.
They're in Florida on a beach.
Uh, no. The rest of it, I'm fine with.
And I think the reason for that is you got to put yourself in the person on the other side of the table. The person on the other side of the table who's interviewing is going to probably want to know answers to questions that can be best answered by some of those people being there.
By having all the combination.
That's what it is. Because if you're going to ask a question about munis or the accounting systems, the HR director, select board members...
Yeah, I can't answer.
And I think that's why we said, wait a minute, because I think oftentimes we look at what we want, but you've got to be able to recognize you're trying to be selling it or hopefully attracting the other side of the table. So that's why, that's why I think those edits would be appropriate.
Yeah.
Yep.
And, and, you know, quite frankly, as, as has been mentioned, when we did our, you know, review for, for Darlene, we, not that we seldom see Darlene, but we don't, we surely don't see her as much as we do, say, town manager or even town council. So I think it does make, make sense to have more of the professionals in the building rather than select board members on it. So I'm fine with making that change.
Agreed. Agree.
Yeah, I think it's very important for the town manager and, and the town finance director.
Right. They're the team. They're the finance team, right, right.
Yeah, to Paul's point. I mean, if I'm interviewing, I want answers. I want to know the team I'm coming into is competent and, you know, knows their stuff.
Right. And you want, and I guess, you know, you want to know that there's some chemistry there. You hope there's some chemistry there between the three.
Agree, agree.
What about on the, is that an eighth? Eighth, the eighth paragraph?
What is it? Okay, what does it say?
When agreement has been reached on the candidate, the select board chair and HR director will meet to complete the hiring process, including negotiating the need for a contract starting. What is our thing on a contract? Because historically, we've never had a contract, right?
That's correct. We, we did not. And I don't know, maybe we, we start out not offering one, maybe.
I know. I feel like maybe that's, I don't even know if we want that to be a, if that's not something that's kind of standardly done. Do we even want it referenced in here or do we not want to have?
Well, it says, including negotiating the need for a contract, but.
Right. And, and maybe it, you know, maybe it would be the situation that, I mean, it probably depends on who you're hiring. If you're hiring a, a new person just out of, you know, you wouldn't hire somebody just out of college, but if you're hiring a, you know, somebody that, well, maybe not an internal, but even somebody that has limited experience versus somebody that's maybe on the downward side of their, their career.
They might want a contract.
Yeah, and they might want a contract just to, you know, close that out. I mean, yeah, I mean, it's, I, I could just take it out because negotiation means negotiating anything and they could bring it up if they felt strongly about it. Or if we felt we need, we wanted to offer a contract, we could make that decision. So, okay, I'll take that out.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea, just to keep it neutral and, yeah. And you may get there and you may not, so.
Right, yeah, yeah. We don't need to make it be a, a point that they, they, you know, hone in on and we don't want them to.
Do we need, do we need anything specific in here about like how many, like do we, do we, do we come up with like six candidates before we start interviews? Do we want to like?
Well, this is different than a town manager. So, I, I think that would depend on the, whether the hiring, so-called hiring, you know, hiring team is or interviewing team.
They could make those decisions, see how many they want to pile up before they start.
And it depends on the time, really.
Right, yeah.
You know, we may luck out and get twenty resumes and we might get two.
I think the pool of potential applicants is not anywhere near.
It's going to be limited. I think the pool.
When I go to my conferences and look across the room, we're all retiring. And there's no, all the younger people coming out of, out of the Bentley's and the, in the, you know, Boston universities and things are going into the corporate world. They're not going into government finances much. So, we're just not seeing.
So, you're saying when I graduated from accounting school, I chose the wrong path.
You know, I made suggestions and you'd want somebody that was a certified government accountant. It's, that's going to be hard to find. You'll probably find somebody more on your end of your, of maybe only giving you a few years to retire or, you know, we're just not seeing that. Because being, you know, being certified is.
Not to get off topic.
Like being a CPA, you're going to take your, you know, courses and it takes a few years to get your, your credits and stuff and then take the test, so.
Not to get off topic or down a rattle, but just at this point in time, are you seeing, are you seeing that more of that? People moving into the positions or, or kind of the internally grown talent?
Yeah, that's what we're seeing.
I ask that because that's, that's important and what these guys have done in running the town is we need people internally that they're potentially going to have to step up.
Right, right. But on the other hand, you don't want them to have the expectation that, that it's theirs for the taking.
No, I agree. I agree.
That's why we want to go through a process.
No, I agree.
Ready for a motion?
Yeah.
Well, no, no, this is a policy, so we, we have to bring it back.
Oh, right, 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 okay.
It's a two-meeting sequence. So, I'll, I'll make those edits and I'll bring it back to our next meeting.
And then we can approve it in the next one. Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you, Pat.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have town manager bid awards.
Yeah, just two items quickly this evening. The first one is for the various roof replacement projects by DPW, which is basically the roof replacements at the center, portion of the center school, the school administrative building and 54 Richardson Road DPW Storage Yard Building. Five proposals were received and our P review committee evaluated them and the decision was to award the contract, I'm seeking your confirmation, to award it to Socotech AE Consulting out of Charleston, Mass. in the amount not to exceed $50,000. And we're currently working with Socotech on the South Row Elementary School project. So, you know, we, we have personal experience and again, so we're seeking to get your contract approval on that award for those three minor roof projects.
I'll make a motion that we approve the town manager's bid award for the design of various roof replacement, replacement projects, including partial roof replacements at center school, school administration building and 54 Richardson Road, DPW Storage Yard as presented and awarded to Socotech AE Consulting in the not to exceed amount of $50,000.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
And then, and then the second one is for the Turnpike Road Sidewalk Project Phase One. This is the portion of Turnpike Road that goes from basically Warren Avenue down heading towards the Credit Union. The estimated cost for this project was $450,000. It's funded through the Complete Streets Grant that the town qualified from the state. The eight, seven bids were received. The lowest responsive, responsible bidder was Commonwealth Construction and Consulting of Woburn in the amount of $344,401. Their references came back fine and therefore we seek your confirmation on the bid award to Commonwealth Construction and Consulting of Woburn.
Okay, I'll make a motion that the board accept the town manager's bid award for the Turnpike Road Sidewalk Phase One IFB awarded to Commonwealth Construction and Consulting LLC at 10 Walnut Hill Park, Suite 3, Woburn, Mass. With a bid amount of $344,401.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Next up, we have town manager reports.
Again, try to be succinct in this one. Since our last meeting, we did receive the determination of compliance by the Executive Office of Housing and Living Communities to be in compliance with the Massachusetts, what's normally known as the MBTA Communities Zoning Law, which is again, the requirement under the state statute. You may have read that the state is still chasing a few rogue communities down that have, haven't acted upon this. But again, it, it, it just speaks to the work that was done by our planning board and consideration by our town meeting that we, you know, that we're not, you know, that we're favorable. And why that means is that it, it does qualify us for certain fund grant and other projects. And as you can see thus far, it hasn't had an adverse effect on our community because again, it was well thought out by our planning board and, and our town meeting. So, that's, that's great news that we're in compliance with the, the act. The second one is, is report on the Pet Cemetery Expansion, you know, status, given your report. It's been two months since we left town meeting with the citizen petition article, which directed the board and the manager to explore the pet cemetery. You know, in terms of financial viability and suitable location. I, I take this seriously like everything else because that's the professional thing to do. The only pet cemetery that I can find, and we discussed this at town meeting, is in Littleton. And so I visited the pet cemetery. It's known as Charlotte's Garden. You see a photo there on the screen of what it looks like. It's a, you know, quite cemetery. It's located adjacent to the main cemetery or really the only cemetery in town of Littleton, West Lawn Cemetery. There's also conservation land. Where the name Charlotte's Garden comes from is that was the benefactor of Charlotte, who, who not only supported the cemetery, but obviously she had her heart for a pet cemetery. Just want to explain what goes on there and, and how it operates. Only cremains are accepted at this location and the lot sizes are either two foot by two foot or four foot by four foot. And they only allow one burial per square foot. So, therefore, if you had a two by two marker, you know, lot, you could put four burials in. And they only allow flat markers. So, and therefore there's no plantings, there's no ornamental decorations. And, you know, it's not expensive. You know, they sell the lots for $200 for the two by two foot lot or the four by four foot's $400. And if you buy the four by one, you get the first burial free and each other burial is $40. This was created 19 years ago in Littleton. Being generous, there's probably 75 interments in, over the 19 years. And I walked the cemetery. You can see the photo. It's not hard to do. It's not a big area. You can see the markers. There are very few in, in recent years. It's well-kept. It, it's an appropriate setting. Obviously, the maintenance is minimal, right? I mean, all they're pretty much doing that I can see out there is they run a mower over it and in the fall, they probably blow the leaves off of it, right? And therefore, the cost is really not, not, not significant and therefore it's accepted by the town of Littleton and it, you know, and it serves its purpose. I've not been able to identify another pet cemetery, municipal one in Massachusetts. There were some in the past that were created by MSPCA. There's also some in Southern Hampshire. Same thing, they're created by nonprofit organizations. I did learn that basically almost 2017, the town of Harwich near the Cape, they got an award from the MMA and they were, and they got town meeting approval to bid, to bid a, create a pet cemetery. Again, their plan was only to accept cremains and then they were going to have a beautiful park-like setting with pathways across two and a half acres of land. And they really saw this as a revenue generator, quite frankly. And, and I've read the news accounts and the town has shared information with me. So, then they went even further and came back and said, not only do that, we should do a pet crematory. Because think about how many dogs and cats there are in the Cape area and there really isn't anything between there and Plymouth and so forth from Harwich. Long story short, at the end of the day, the town, town meeting not only defeated the crematory, pet crematory, they also rescinded the pet cemetery. And so there's no pet cemetery in, in, in Harwich and there's no plans to bring, to resurrect that proposal. Again, well-intended, good efforts and coordinated in the community. And so I guess what I'm coming back with is, is, you know, that, it seems like this could be done for a minimal cost. If, if you're going with, you know, cremains, which is basically obviously, you know, cremated animals remains. And, and that's why it's only a short interment fee because the DPW handles everything in Littleton. They provide the markers, they provide the, the burial.
Land is also adjacent to their.
It's adjacent to their cemetery. So, it's an easy thing. The challenge we have in Chelmsford is we don't have any suitable land next to our cemeteries in Chelmsford. And quite frankly, I haven't been able to find a suitable land in the town. And these are the discussions that I've had with Mary Donovan over the years. Mary, where are we going to put this? And, and thus far, I'm just reporting back to you because we're sort of in this midpoint between spring town meeting and coming back to fall town meeting, where I'd like to make a report to the town. And that the status report is, I can't find a location. And the reason for that was going back about 15 years ago, as, and you know, as the town was aggressively acquiring, you know, open space lands, Sheehan Farm and so forth, we also went through with Dave McLaughlin and the conservation administrator at the time, we went through all the town's inventory of parcels. Anything of significance, meaning it had joined conservation land or was any significant size. We brought all those articles in, to town meeting over like a three or four-year period and basically accepted them and transferred them to conservation. So, we now have over 1,000 acres of conservation land in Chelmsford. But the, and then what we did with others that, that were sort of orphaned parcels, we worked with the, with the finance director, John Souza, and we would, with the board's approval, we would go and we'd offer them to the abutting property owners to see if they would want to expand their parcel size. Because either at the time, this was before the ATU by law, but if you would need, you were on the Board of Appeals, you know, if you needed it, what's your acreage and your land? And that's what we did with any, now, I'm not saying we don't have any few stragglers out there. But what we need would be a parcel where you could have a pet cemetery and have parking and access to it. And I'm putting this out there now in July because if anybody knows, whether it's watching this program or otherwise, where such a parcel might be, let me know. Then the question is, well, why doesn't the town use community preservation land? Well, you can't. You know, we looked at that, you know, pet cemetery or a cemetery is not allowed use of community preservation funds. So, we can't sit there and take a portion off of Sheehan Farm or a portion off of Coolest Farm or Warren Pole and do that. It's not allowed. Also, those properties are all under conservation restrictions at this point or in the way of getting those done. But even if ones aren't done, you still can't do it. So, the only thought I had, and again, it was a suggestion that a couple people of the community have raised to me is, well, could you do something at the dog park? I went and walked over at the dog park two weeks ago. There's no land adjacent to the dog park. The reason the dog park fencing is where it is is because that's the extent that you could put a dog park there. Because if you go on the other side of the fence by the sewer pump station, the topography, and that's why if you notice the, the edge of that dog park, how it grades up the hill, there's no land there. And then obviously, other parts of that site, you don't want to be digging because as you know, we're doing water treatment and everything else over there. And quite frankly, the, the challenge is if you use a, if you bury, as, as Mary found out in Tingsborough, you're going to run into issues if you want to use that land for a separate purpose at a later time. And, and that's obviously what was so upsetting to Mary Donovan is, is because of what happened in Tingsborough, they, they thought there was a better use for that property. So, the only thing I can suggest would be, do you put some kind of an above-ground, you know, pet columbarium at the dog park? And therefore, you know, as we know with the agreement with the Stanton Foundation for the Dog Park, you know, we don't have to always keep a dog park there, but if, if it happens within 50 years of when we accepted that grant and built the dog park, we'd have to relocate it. Same thing, if you had a pet columbarium, you could relocate the columbarium if you relocate the dog park. What the dog park has, it has parking and it, and it, you know, it has visitors and it's an area for pets. And obviously, it wouldn't just be dogs that could be buried there. You could bury, you know, cats or whatever. But I think the concern I have, and Jeff, you may know this better than me, is those aren't cheap, columbariums. And so I, my concern with that is, is yeah, you can see the minimal, the minimal cost in Littleton in terms of, you know, flush mowers, you know, you know, no maintenance or anything else. I think a small columbarium would be quite costly and I'm not sure, again, that there's a market for it. So, I'm willing and I'm anxious and want to do more work in this. I'm just at a point where I thought it's appropriate for me to stop in and touch bases with you as a board and, and hopefully others who are watching this, see if there's any further ideas if I need to go further. Because what Mary wanted to do is she wanted a place where she could bury animals in caskets and, and I'm not seeing that anywhere.
Right.
And, and I just, I'm just sort of at, I'm at a wall and I want to come to you and I'm sure, you know, we'll, we'll, and I will reconnect with Mary Donovan in the future going forward. But I just thought at this point where we're midpoint that I should touch base with you because one, when, you know, we're not ignoring what, what, what town meeting asked us to do. And I'm sort of looking for direction on how best to proceed going forward. So, I'll stop there.
Well, it's interesting you brought up Harwich because I'm very good friends with Robin Kelly, who runs that cemetery. And she told me about their thoughts on, they were going to do it, but then they realized there really wasn't a market for it. And as far as columbarium, yeah, you could make a small one that could fit many, but I mean, it's still not going to be cheap. I mean, you could do it using Chelmsford granite if you wanted to, but again, it's a cost. And probably wouldn't be much maintenance, but as you said, Paul, you know, you get it up there and maybe in the first year, you get 25 and then the next 10, you get five. So, I don't, I don't see huge need for it in town right now. That's just my opinion, but.
I agree. I, I mean, I hate to say it and put it this way, but I'd rather you not spend any more time on this at all. If Tom Meeting wants to bring it up or somebody wants to come to town meeting as an article to discuss it again, that's fine. But my direction would be to, we've, we've spent enough time on this and I don't think that there's enough of a want in town for it. And I appreciate the person's wanting to pursue this and, and research it. But I, but I honestly think that I'd rather you not waste any more time on this and focus. and focus on the other things that are more important to the town, just to put it very bluntly and succinctly.
I guess I kind of disagree with that. I mean, you just opened it up to the community to say, does anybody have any ideas? I mean, if somebody comes up with an idea, I wouldn't go out and, and, you know, try to, you know, stir some up or anything like that. But if somebody does come up with some idea that you haven't thought of, I don't think it should be dismissed out of hand. And, and yeah, I mean, I-
I wasn't advocating. I was advocating just him not spending any more time unless somebody does come up with some kind of idea that needs-
Okay, well, that's what I said.
Yeah, so, but-
Maybe just have somebody present something to us for consideration. That would be much easier than trying to, than running around trying to figure out-
He's just spinning his wheels, though.
Well, but he's, you know, I don't think you spent like 40 hours on it or anything like that, so.
Is there, well, I mean, this may have been discussed before, but is there a reason that they can't just put it in the cemetery?
Yeah, you can't, by law, state law. You cannot, yeah, you cannot, yeah. But Jeff knows better than me.
There is also no law, you can't put it in your personal yard.
How far does it have to be from, from human remains?
As far as in the, in the town, the municipal cemeteries, you cannot co-mingle. It's illegal.
But if you were to, I mean, how far away from human remains would it, like if they were to put it next to a regular cemetery? How far?
That's what this one was-
It's about 30 yards in, in, in West, in Littleton. It's, it's a, it's a pathway. It's 30 yards away. But the problem is, we don't, there is no such land in Chelmsford by the cemetery.
I don't think there's any like distance that's quoted in the, in the regulation. But I know it does say that there's no, there's no law against burying your own pets in your yard. Although, they suggest that you do reach out to the Board of Health, make sure there's no water concerns or anything like that, like we see at 54 Orange and Road, I mean.
So I think, I think you've done a lot of the work that you could have done and what was asked. I do think anybody that's looking at this, of just saying, you know, we'll sit around and wait for ideas is, I don't, I don't agree with that process. I definitely think other ideas, you can field those, and then they can be brought back to town meeting, because we owe them an answer. I can't imagine it would be much more effort to find out what the cost of a columbarium is. I mean, that's, I'm sure, a request. We could probably get some estimates. But, but at that point, I think that we've done-
You've done the research, we've done the findings, we've opened it up to public, other public statements. And that that's, this is what could be presented at town meeting. But again, I, I think not having that number in there is not a, is not a good idea, and I don't think getting it is a heavy lift. And, because town meeting would have to approve anything to be done after that.
And the other problem is, there's no vacant land on the market for sale in town. And that, and not to mention what that would cost for, you know, because, so that's the other challenge. You're right. If the other thing was to look for parcels, well, there's nothing on the market.
I think, I think this is, this is the only potential viable option based on what you've presented us. And if it's simply, this is what it would cost to purchase and install one of X size and X size, then, then that's, that, we can bring it back to town meeting and let them decide.
So has the dog park committee been advised of this?
No, no. I will, I will touch base with them to see what their reaction is, if they even want to go there. But, you know, as you know, that, yeah, so we'll see.
And if they say no, then that's fine. We don't need to know the cost. And then that's the presentation to town meeting, right?
Yeah, these are the avenues we explored, and none of them are viable. Or this one might be viable, and this is the cost. Yeah, that's, yeah. And that seems like a pretty solid.
And then the final thing under my report is the monthly double poll report. Again, be real succinct. There's 50 double polls as of July 1st. Three were removed and six were added during the past month. The bottleneck was Comcast. And I basically have been working in frequent correspondence with them. They have since removed eight double polls and said they verified 15 double polls. So in about 10 more days, I'll have a new report, and we'll see where we are. But the good news is, with the only three double polls, I mean, that's a normal sequence of stuff. And National Grid, to their credit, is moving on this stuff. It's, you know, and they are helping us with the fiber providers to get their stuff done, so. And also, I put out requests for the residents for double polls that maybe aren't on the list, and we'll keep doing that. And so thus far, again, very tepid response. And I know people are away, but again, we'll stay on this, but overall, it's moving.
There's one on here that's actually not there anymore.
Okay, that's good. Okay, so, so that's, that concludes my report for this evening, which I think puts you to liaison reports.
Thank you. Yes, so we are at liaison reports. That is all we have left. So Jeff, do you want to go first?
The cemetery's pretty quiet in the summertime.
It's pretty quiet most of the time.
Well, the commission, the commission really doesn't meet, meet very much, but I don't think there's any, any concerns or anything going on over there. I know tomorrow night, Conservation's having a meeting, and I think we all received Karl Biskov's plan for Coolest Farm very well. Pat, you didn't see that, you didn't receive that email? I thought we all did.
Yeah.
I think it spelled out exactly what they want to do.
About a month ago.
Oh, yes, yeah.
Before our last meeting.
So I'm going to try to attend their meeting tomorrow night and see if there's any other things that come up over that. And I guess they've kind of put Bill Vines in charge of it, and we'll see where it goes. And then, the parade. It was a fantastic two days, and we had so much fun. But not so much having more board members. I think we need more parade day volunteers up at the school. Because it's, people who participate can tell you how chaotic it can be, us trying to manage in between the school, the police station, and the football field. It's just, and I saw that they've added some pavement at McCarthy, which I'm excited. Maybe we can do two rows out front, and that'll kind of alleviate some of the concern of that back lot. So, but I'm going to try to get to work. I've called for a meeting on August 5th, and I'm starting to reach out to different, like drone companies and laser companies, stuff like that, knowing that next year, everybody's already booked. I mean, it's amazing. And some have, you know, increased their prices, knowing that, that there'd be more of a desire for the 250th. So I'm going to keep working at that, and hopefully, we'll get something together. And that's why I want to get the committee together sooner than later, because then we got to do a reorg. And I want to start to get work on next year, because I want next year to be incredible. And that's probably the year that most of us is going to be stepping down. To Darlene's point, I'm not going to just shut my phone off and cancel my emails. If I, if I'm asked to stay and consult and be some kind of participant as far as assisting, making sure we keep the relationships with our vendors and our sponsors, and I'd be happy to do that. But we'll see, you know? It's, it's, everybody says, "Oh, it's a year away." Well, that year comes quick, believe me. That's it. That's all I got.
Thanks, Jeff.
I got a couple quick ones. Once a month Board of Health meeting occurred on July 8th. They have a pretty standard format. It's pretty quick to go through. They, you know, I had no update for them from the select board. We do have a standing spot on their agenda. There's some new business and discussions around some regulations regarding septic and those types of things. I did learn that there's only 107 residences left in town that are still on septic, and about 30 of them are in the aquifer protection zone. So those are the ones that are on the highlight of the board right now. I learned a lot that evening. Unfortunately, it's not televised, so.
When's Richard Day when you need him?
I'm learning. And I think the other thing, they do a lot of, they do a good job getting that newsletter out. And I know Pat, you know, presents that information. But yeah, that's one of those ones I think people should subscribe to, that they're always offering something to participate in, whether it's CPR, or an ARCAN, or those types of things. So I'll continue to attend those meetings if anything, you know, critical comes up, you know, for the board, I'll let you know. But for the public, you should definitely follow their agenda if there's anything of interest, and you should subscribe to their monthly newsletters. The other one was the planning board meeting, which was pretty jam-packed full on Wednesday, the 9th. They're discussing, continue to work to discuss some of the rezoning articles that they're going to bring up to, to fall town meeting, so there's a handful of those. There was quite a few people there for the Chelmsford Mall hearing, so the, the potential drive-throughs and the work that's going on up at Chelmsford Road. So that's, you're better served by watching the, go back and re-watching the video on that than, than getting my update. But there was, there was, this room was jam-packed full as well as the hallway. And they continued to make strides with getting some grant money to work on the managed growth strategy that the Strategic Planning Steering Committee put onto their plate. So, and tomorrow night's another board meeting, so we'll have, we'll have an update for the next-
Well, Aaron, I'd like to comment on that planning board meeting. I did watch it, because it affects my home directly, which, you know, the whole mall project. And when I first decided to run, one of my goals was trying to utilize our commercial properties to, as much as we can, to get as much revenue on them that we can. And unfortunately, town meeting shot down one of those proposals. And one of the other goals that I had put out was the getting a marijuana dispensary in town to increase revenue. And that was shot down. And I'm just, I don't want to see this project that the mall shot down. I know a lot of my neighbors don't want to hear that, but, but all I'm hearing is traffic, traffic, traffic. The most of the time, we get traffic over there is at, at the holidays, when everybody's going to the grocery stores. And that's not going to be affected by putting a Starbucks or Chick-fil-A in that parking lot. And I'll, I'll challenge anybody, please go up to Enterprise at Drumhill and, and watch McDonald's. See how they manage traffic. It's not the nightmare that everybody wants to make it out to be. I mean, they've figured it out with these double drive-throughs to get traffic off the street and then put it back on slower. And, and I, the presentation that Wyn Stanley made, I was very impressed. A lot of people, well, they're from Concord, they don't care about Chelmsford. I totally disagree. Look at the work they've done in Chelmsford. They've really tried to keep the character of the town, and I think they will continue to do that. They're a really good company. You can, they're approachable, which is what I would like to see. And that's that. So I'm sure that's going to cost me some votes next year, or next time I run.
No, but it, you know, you went and got, you went and got informed, you watched the video. And I think that's really, people need to do that with the, especially with the planning board. And normally, I would have a final square, but they are meeting right now, so I'll follow up with them later on. So all my other committees meet once a month, so there's not a whole lot of updating right now. That's my report.
Okay. I don't have too much, just the ZBA, the appeals for 243 River Neck, and which we all already know about, and Crosby Lane, that it's an ongoing situation. And that was all I had.
Yeah, July's a very quiet month. We have no school building committee meetings this month. And PBC took the month off as well, Permanent Building Committee. But I do, I can say, regarding the Parker Middle School project, we have received architects' proposals. They're being reviewed, and we're on schedule to make the MSBA meeting next month to get that, an architect approved for that project. So, and then, then, then we can really get things off the ground and start some meaningful work in the way of design and discussion of all the different pieces. On the permanent building committee side, just real quickly, I know that we've received the schematic drawings at this point. We are to receive a project budget early next month, in August. And so that's the next big piece that we're looking forward to, to see where that project stands. So that's really what's going on this month.
Yes, a few things. First of all, earlier this month, Doreen, Doreen Dashler passed away a couple days before the 4th. That was quite a surprise. She was very, she was very outspoken in town. We all knew where she stood on every, on every issue. So she's definitely going to be missed. Kind of in, in line with what we talked about, about how Paul is everywhere. On Saturday, Paul was at the Little League fields. We were, we were there for the opening ceremonies for the New England Regional Championships for the, for the under-10 Little Leaguers. And it was, it was a good turnout, and they had a good weekend to begin their, their tournament. I think they go until the 24th, so hopefully, the Chelmsford team will come out on top. But if not, they'll, they'll have fun doing whatever they do to get there. And just lastly, last week, there was a, a meeting in Lowell about the, the new Rourke Bridge, that they've actually begun the preparation work for that, finally. Some of the, the land clearing has begun, and they're, they're going to go full steam ahead on that. And as everybody knows, the, the existing bridge will stay open while the new one is under construction. So the time that it will, that the old one will actually be, that there'll be no bridge there usable is going to be very short. They expect it to be ready for traffic by 2029, which is going to be sooner than, it's going to be here any minute. And everything will be totally complete by 2030, including the demolition of the, the current bridge. So that's, that's good news on, on that front. I mean, you know, it's, it's in Lowell, but I know it, it impacts a lot of people if you're trying to get over the bridge anywhere. So it's, it's going to be a huge-
Temporary bridge.
And it's super scary.
For 30 years.
There's a plaque on it, dedicated.
Yeah, so, that's all I have.
I wish I could believe it was going to be as quick as 29, but.
Oh, I bet it will. I bet it will, because it originally was 28, and they put the 29 to add a little buffer, so.
Well, a few years ago, you'd be saying, "I wish I would, could believe that this was ever actually even going to happen." So I feel like, yeah, the fact that it's going is huge progress.
I've been watching a bridge on Jopolo Road in Waltham for 25 years now. And they just finished the thing like last year.
Yeah, yeah. All right. With that, I think we're, we're good. I'll take a motion if anyone's-
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to second. All those in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.